Search by the meeting number, they should be able to get in there. Um, well, welcome to what we are considering day forty, uh, which is surprising that it's been that long of our COVID-19 response process. Um, this time, you know, it's not something we usually talk about in the springtime, is talking about peak, um, and, and hitting the peak. That's something we like in New England to refer to more around the fall and the peak of foliage, but we are getting close. We're in the, in the ramp up to the peak of COVID-19 right now. Um, still fully expected to get there between, uh, right around people eighteenth to the twentieth. Uh, the projections keep moving a little bit in each direction around that. Um, good news is, is in the short term, the projected, uh, beds needed and, uh, ICU and vents needed has actually come down, uh, significantly, which is great news for the area. Um, it's well within the range of our surge capacity, which is a, a good area to be in. It does mean we will have some resources to, to cover this. However, you know, models are only models and it can go different ways in a hurry. So it's only based on the information that goes into the model. Um, before I kick it off to John, just wanted to continue saying that I appreciate all the hard work everybody's doing. Um, we do feel like at least at the, uh, command centers are getting too close to a steady state. We certainly are continuing to get some questions and changes, uh, but we appreciate the fact that, uh, the hard work that everybody's put in the last week to two and a half weeks, um, getting the, the system set up to run when we do hit this peak. So I just want to say thank you. Um, as we move into this, as we've been doing at the end, uh, we'll answer all Q and A. So go ahead and put your questions into the chat, um, area. If you hover over the screen, uh, there's a little balloon that will come up. You can open up the chat section and put stuff in there and we'll answer them all at the end. But at this point, I'm just going to turn it over to John, who's going to do a walkthrough of the current update with a lot of, uh, slides, pictures and, and a nice, uh, movie surprise. So John, go ahead.
All right. Welcome, everyone. So, uh, we're going to, I'll give you a situation update. Um, we're, we're continuing to, uh, kind of push the limits here on what we can do from webexing. So I'm going to, uh, swap my screen for a minute and share just a quick video with you guys. And this was, uh, a patient that was discharged on Monday of this week. This was a patient that, uh, was our first COVID positive patient, was in the ICU for a very long time. Uh, was on a ventilator, had, you know, excellent care by the ICU critical care staff, the nursing staff, then throughout the hospital was, you know, up in the med surge units as well. And everyone in the hospital, uh, you know, you know, impacted his, his, his outcome. And it's a great success story. So I'll just want to share it with you for, uh, one, one minute, about a thirty second video, and then we'll swap back. You should all be able to see it and, uh, with some luck, you'll be able to hear it as well. I'm just going to, uh, stop sharing. Uh, all right. Hopefully that, uh, worked okay. Um, but yes, big success story. The staff was, 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 uh, thrilled to be able to wish him well. And we had staff upstairs on the, on the first floor as well as on the second floor. Um, and, uh, just a happy moment for us. Uh, here's a list of the things that we're going to discuss today and I'll review. Um, I'm going to go as quick as I can because I probably have too many slides today for the amount of time that we have and to give everyone a chance to, to ask questions, I will move quickly. Um, just a quick, uh, picture of the command center. Uh, I am trying to liven up the presentation a little bit because, uh, looking at pictures with words is, is kind of boring and particularly without the folks being able to get up and get around. They, you don't know what, all the work, uh, that's going on here. So we're, we're trying to be able to incorporate that. Uh, that's Annette and Joan, and they have been in the command center, uh, for about forty days straight now. And, uh, they're there pretty much every day, Monday through Friday, and then, uh, as well as sometimes on the weekends as well. But, uh, they're doing a great job and very grateful for their, for their help. Uh, Steve touched on this a little bit, but a quick overview of where we are with coronavirus in the United States and in Massachusetts. Uh, these are stats as of today, you know, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight cases in the U.S. with, uh, just, just about fifteen thousand deaths. In Massachusetts, as of, uh, yesterday, we had sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety confirmed, uh, positive cases. Uh, yesterday there was, you know, fifteen hundred and eighty-eight new cases, and that was in a twenty-four hour period. Uh, unfortunately, total, a total of four hundred and thirty-three deaths and seventy-seven deaths in the last twenty-four hours. Uh, this is the slide that you have all seen previously, uh, that's done at Johns Hopkins, and they keep, uh, track on it and just another visual presentation of it and, uh, the same information I showed you, uh, before. But, uh, certainly a good, uh, slide to, or a good website to take some time and look at if you haven't. Um, it does give you all the statistics and breakdowns and you can drill into certain things and, and you can look at, uh, the slope of, of how we're doing as well. This is the slide from the Mass Department of Public Health that they update every day at four-thirty. Uh, once again, the number of cases in Massachusetts. This is the key updates that they update every day at four-thirty with how many, uh, new cases, new tests that were done, um, and, uh, the death statistic of, of where we are with, with how many deaths along the, you know, along with that is the information broken down by county, sex, age group. Uh, and the following slide is, uh, some additional information that they've added of, you know, folks that are hospitalized, uh, you know, patients that were not hospitalized. But then, uh, the breakdown by race, ethnicity, this is, you know, certainly gathered a lot of attention in the news over the last week. So we now have it and you can take a look at it, uh, for yourself, um, on the website. And it's at the Mass Department of Public Health, uh, website. And, uh, you click on it, it will open all this up. Uh, but I, this is really just to make you aware that this information's out there. It's good to be familiar with it. Go to the Department of Web Health website and, you know, continue to educate yourself about it and, and keep informed. Uh, this is just a different graph and it shows you, uh, the kind of the cumulative reported cases, which is the dark purple line and the daily growth rate. Uh, oh, so this is the daily growth rate of coronavirus patients as well as, uh, you know, the cumulative. So this was updated, I believe, on the seventh. Uh, and as you can see, the, the growth rate is, uh, you know, slowing down a little bit. We're still having quite a few, uh, ca- new cases every day as, as we talked about, uh, just a few slides ago and kind of what the, the cumulative cases are. Um, just a quick, uh, little fact for those of you, that, uh, 2020 is a unique leap year. It's got twenty-nine days in February, three hundred days in March, and, uh, five years in April. So, uh, we're going to, you know, make sure we take a, a moment to, uh, laugh and along the way and then, and make sure that, uh, we keep our spirits up. There's lots of serious stuff and, you know, it's, it's good to take your mind off of, uh, coronavirus even for a minute here and there. The community hospital, uh, daily COVID stats, this is, uh, information that's sent out each day. And this is just the Marlboro Hospital stats. And I've just given you since the last week, we had it up last week as well. Uh, I've highlighted the, kind of the gray, uh, li- the lines that are highlighted gray are the, they're all port, but some are a little bit more important from a, of how we're looking at coronavirus in the hospital. So number of inpatient positives, you know, includes the ICU. At Marlboro Hospital as of this morning, we have eight, uh, we have eight patients in the ICU that are coronavirus on vents. Uh, I will talk a little bit more about this in a few minutes. Number of inpatients that are PUI, seven. So we have a total of, uh, you know, fifteen patients that are PUIs and, uh, positive coronavirus patients in the hospital. Then we go down here and just gives us the breakup information. We will send this out later so you can take your time to kind of look through it and, and, you know, please feel free to reach out afterwards if questions don't get answered during this time. I do want to highlight, uh, this as well, that, uh, you know, number of employees quarantined or two. Uh, we've been, you know, fortunate and successful in, uh, keeping our employees safe. And the two employees that are quarantined right now are, are employees that have, uh, but out exposures outside of work, um, you know, spouses and a friend. And there was, uh, had been several days apart from being at work. So we're, we're pretty sure that these were exposed outside of work. And we do focus on this closely because we want to make sure that we are keeping everyone safe at work.
So John, just wanted to clarify, we have eight, uh, patients in the ICU, but only three are on vents.
Correct. Did I say that?
Nate, Nate, just wanted to correct everybody.
Thanks. Uh, right. Tent registration lot. Uh, this is a picture looking out towards Union Street. Uh, on what seems to be more often than not, we seem to have rainy days. It's funny that, how often you pay attention to the weather when you're doing stuff that involves being outside. And I think I can count how many rainy days we've had in the last, uh, forty days or at least in the last thirty since our tent's been open. And the tent crew is out doing a terrific job, but this is not an unusual scene. Uh, right outside over my left shoulder is the, uh, the line for the, the tent. And there's pretty much cars out there all the time. There's still, you know, several cars out there and we're, they're doing a great job and they're, they're moving people along. And this has been a great service to the, the community and, and helping folks be able to get an answer quickly and, and not coming to the emergency department, uh, when they're not, you know, they're not, you know, when they're not needing to come to the emergency department. Testing turnaround times, lots of conversation for, and questions around testing, turning time. This is another information that we get for Marlboro Hospital and for all of the system each day. And average turnaround time is, is this box right here. So this is UMass, Quest Marlboro and Quest overall. Originally, folks may remember that we were sending our stuff to, out to California and that was, uh, the original quest time, you know, so over, about a day and a half, you know, to get the results. Quest Marlboro was significantly faster and, uh, UMass now has started testing and all of our tests as of yesterday morning are going to Quest, uh, excuse me, to UMass. Uh, so they're going to the medical center. And as of yesterday, uh, they have an additional test that they can do that's done by Abbott Labs that takes about, uh, I think it's forty-five minutes. Don't quote me on it. Steve, do you remember, is it forty-five minutes? It, yeah, I think you're on mute, but it's, uh, it's significantly faster. The, it's only about seventy percent accurate, uh, but it's very sensitive. So the tests that are positive, uh, are, they could be, they're presumed to be definitely positive. So we have the same machine, we're just waiting for our hood to be able to use it here. And that hood's about three weeks away, but we're still sending, uh, our, the quick tests to Mar- to the medical center as well. So the testing has definitely improved, the turnaround time is getting better and better. And we're fortunate to be able to, to be able to have all this, uh, available for us. Uh, quick slide on, this is just a new room that was put together as of, uh, yesterday last evening. This is an outpatient waiting room for, for folks that are coming in for x-rays, lab work that, uh, are presenting. What's, one of the things that we've recently discovered is that folks that are, you know, that were seen in their primary care office or called their primary care office, they're, they're coming in here and being sent here for a chest x-ray or lab work. And when they're getting screened at the door, they're, it's, they're falling into a category of what they're called, uh, you know, a patient under investigation that could have coronavirus. So we need to make sure that we are putting them in a place that they're not infecting the staff or other patients that are coming to the hospital. So Paul Vergieri and his team, uh, have worked very quickly with registration and, and other folks in the lab, folks to, uh, create a space that these patients can now sit and, uh, be cohorted by them, by themselves so they're not in kind of the general public area. And we've developed plans about getting them in, in quickly and out quickly and, uh, and cleaning around it. So just one example of, of things that pop up that you don't expect and, uh, you know, this is just kind of a, every day something new comes up that we have to change to. And the, the team here is doing a terrific job getting, getting these things figured out and, and done quickly and safely. So operations on alternative bed planning. Uh, you know, this is a, a slide that, uh, was shown yesterday at the medical center's, uh, virtual town hall. And, uh, basically there, the highlights here are, we are working as a system to be able to have a, a place that can, but, uh, take COVID positive patients that are required some skilled nursing care. And that's going to be Bumont, uh, in Worcester. And there's, that's, that's been worked on for a while. And I think there's, it's got a fair amount of press, so folks may be familiar with that. But, uh, that's a, a great piece and exciting for us to be able to, to be able to use. The UMass DCU Center has, has also been kind of publicly, uh, publicly talked about. That opened up this morning, uh, and that, that's, has a, Dr. Dixon's been involved with that as long as the medical center folks, but they are now accepting patients. They opened this morning. And on the, the medical center's call this morning, they were talking about getting their first patient from, from Boston Medical Center. There is criteria around those patients, uh, that have to meet to be accepted there, but it's a great way to offload, uh, patients that are, that are not sick, as sick as, and requiring intensive work that's going to be needed at the hospital, uh, and to be able to get them care so they can continue to, uh, to heal. Some pictures of the, the DCU field hospital. Not going to read all of this, but I do want to just remind folks that, uh, there is resources for caregivers and this is on the hub as well. As I said, we'll send this, this out as well. This will be available on the hub, the presentation as well as all of the slides. Please, you know, reach out and sign up for anything and participate in things. If you, if you're feeling stressed or if you are looking for a way to, to talk about care, um, I, I encourage each of you to, uh, you know, to reach out and get the resources that you need. And if you have any questions, please reach out to your manager or anyone on the senior management team to, to help you with this. This slide is just, uh, paper inventory and this is the, but this is an important slide for folks to, to know. And we will make sure this is, continues to get distributed and socialized regarding the pappers. And where they're located, uh, because we have pappers in the emergency department, we've got pappers in the ICU and pappers available for, uh, the operating team. And we need to keep very close track of them, uh, and lock, log them in, log them out because there's not a ton of them. And if we're missing them, it's a, it's a big problem because of when we need them for an emergency intubation or we need them for an OR case, we have to make sure that they are, uh, available. And you can see that they're broken down, not in terrific here because the slide came a little blurry. I apologize about that. Um, but we're, you can make sure that the units have them, the supervisors have this slide and are able to, to get a papper if it's needed. But there's, it's a very small group of staff that need a papper depending on the procedure. Uh, and, you know, we continue to talk about that and, and work with staff. Uh, great news, our Teresa Canali, who's been here for a very long time, is going to be retiring at the end of the month. And Kathleen Luzyk is the new lab director. She has been helping out at Health Alliance over the last couple of weeks and has started here. Uh, the picture on the left is what Kathleen looks like. And the picture on your right is what, uh, Kathleen looks like while she's at work. So, um, we're having to get to used to, if you haven't met her or you don't know who people are, it's, it's very difficult to figure out who people are if you can only see their eyes and get, gets used to figuring out who they are. So many of us have been here for a long time and luckily, uh, the masks aren't too tricky, but it certainly adds a level of confusion. So we're thrilled to have Kathleen here and, uh, you know, to get her up in orient and, and, oh, as she transitions with Teresa. And Teresa is, you know, glad to have the help. Teresa's been working pretty much seven days a week due to all of the tent work and, uh, is happy to, to have the support. So welcome Kathleen. Just a couple of pictures of the negative pressure work that's being done. Uh, Mike Williams and his facilities team along with, uh, Sterling Construction has been a, a huge help in us being able to successfully make so many negative pressure rooms. And this is a Grainger two room. And this is the HEPA negative air filter. And it, you know, it sucks the air in and blows it out the window. So as you can see, the, the windows have to be taken out, uh, and they have to, this all is to be kind of custom made and they've, they've been fantastic in getting this done. We have, uh, you know, five rooms up on Grainger two, uh, seven rooms downstairs in Grainger one. All of the ICU now is negative pressure and these are the rooms in, in the ICU. And this is, the room is on the left and these go through the, like, the family waiting area and out the window. So, uh, lots of additional work and, and, uh, kind of folks being innovative to figure out how this is getting done. So, um, when I tell you that this is, uh, you know, affected every aspect of the hospital, uh, there's, you know, it's, we've changed our footprint and how people work and, and everything else. So, uh, just to give folks an idea that, that aren't here, what, what's going on. Uh, ICU surge beds, this is a picture of the PACU and, uh, this is the nurse's station. The PACU beds are here on the right. And as we're preparing for, uh, a surge, we want to make sure as a system that we have enough ICU beds. So we have committed to creating a surge space in the PACU upstairs, which gives us five additional beds. Uh, once again, this had to be, this area needed to be negative pressure if we ever wanted to take a COVID patient upstairs. We're hoping that we, the plan is not to take COVID patients upstairs in the, in the surge ICU. Uh, but if needed to, if needed, we will, we'll be able to make that space negative pressure. And this required, uh, you know, a, a fan as well as some piping that goes out a window over to your right. Um, so once again, some, some great teamwork in getting this done. Uh, Sean Cody and Dr. Kim Robinson have been, uh, you know, terrific in getting this planned out and needing the equipment that we need, uh, getting extra, extra ventilators, which, uh, the network with the state to get, which we just recently got, uh, five additional ventilators. So now we have ten ventilators that we can use. And the, the plan would be to use ten ventilators in our, in our main ICU for, for COVID patients and put patients that were non-COVID upstairs and, you know, ideally not, not ventilated. Uh, but, you know, we'll, we'll just, we're taking this day by day, but the bottom line is that we're prepared, we have the equipment, and we're continuing to work through the, the pieces to this, uh, the staffing. Uh, you know, it's certainly a piece in how we have to flex with the, the nursing staff and create care teams. Uh, Dr. Robinson's group, uh, has to, you know, was working on a way with, of staffing this and being able to care for a higher caseload. We continue to work with the EICU. The OR staff has been, uh, very cooperative in understanding this and they've taken one of their OR rooms and made it into a pre-op and PACU holding space. We're continuing to gather equipment for that. So everyone is touched by this, even if there's not a, you know, active COVID patient up in that area, uh, their area's been affected and everyone has shown great teamwork in helping us prepare for, for the next steps. So, uh, thank you. So the new issues that have come up, uh, you know, our crisis standards of care and, you know, slash ethics committee that, uh, came out yesterday from the state. Dr. Cavanaro was heading it up for the community hospitals and is working with, uh, you know, Dr. Jane and the, the medical staff here as well as folks at Health Alliance. And this is really about, uh, if things became in a dire strait, how would, how would care be, you know, assigned and, and in that, uh, the state has come out with a guideline and, uh, as a hospital, the medical group is, is going through that. Uh, we continue to work with telemedicine, particularly behavioral health. Uh, we have gotten great, I, great support from our team in the ability to, uh, you know, have phones, to be able to FaceTime with staff, whether, uh, FaceTime with clergy staff. You know, just recently we were able to work with clergy and they were able to, uh, FaceTime and they give a patient last rites, uh, over the, over, you know, a, a WebEx meeting. So, uh, we, as I said, we've, we're changing everything the way we're doing and, uh, it, the families, patients are, are, are happy and, you know, are, are understanding and grateful for, for the opportunities to be able to adapt and, and be able to do what they need to, to be with their loved ones or, or to say goodbye to their loved ones. Uh, and we continue to, uh, discuss PPE. And, uh, as, you know, that's, uh, just a continuous education and conversation so folks understand what they should be wearing and, and how to wear it. Registration, we've had some meetings with registration to make sure that we're not exposing the registration staff unnecessarily, that they don't have to go into patient rooms, uh, or, you know, burn through PPE. So we've, we've changed their workflow and continue to, to work and streamline, streamline that. Uh, I have a few more slides. Uh, this is just, uh, you know, the critical standards of care that came out by the Mass DPH. Once again, you can take some time to look at it, uh, you know, once, after the meeting, it'll be on the line. These are just, uh, several slides of, uh, places that have donated stuff. We've been very, very lucky and fortunate. There's been lots of donations from the community. Uh, this one is from Aspen Valley Regional High School. Uh, this was early on, uh, we weren't, weren't wearing masks yet, uh, all of the time. And, uh, you know, which now seems like it was, uh, months ago, but it was, it was just short, two short weeks ago or so, I believe. Uh, but lots of great donations. So thanks to everyone at the community, if you've had any part of it, we're very grateful. The staff is appreciated, appreciates it and, uh, it's been, it's been great, you know, and we're lucky that, you know, and in particular, I feel lucky that I can go out and give stuff away to staff, uh, for doing, you know, for doing the work that they're doing and they're, they're grateful for it. This is a, a donation from one of the local churches. Uh, this is from St. Mary's Credit Union. Uh, so really lots of, lots of great stuff. Um, and, uh, this is our patient that we started with that, uh, the video wasn't, he's elbowing, um, you know, a, elbowing, bumping, a staff member on his, on his way out. So lots of exciting stuff. There's, you know, there's tons of information in here and I do want to open up some, uh, questions in the last five or six minutes here. Um, if you have any, uh, questions, please, please go ahead and, this is a, you know, a picture of the bin bin that ducked off sandwiches last night. So as I say, we've had tremendous community support. So thank you.
All right, John, we do have, uh, one question here from Dr. Singler. Basically, has there been any discussion around anesthesia staff's role in the PACU surge?
Yes, Dr., yeah, we meet, we've been meeting, uh, I think twice a week with, uh, Dr. Waltz Mateus, um, regarding this. He's, you know, involved in, and he's given us some suggestions. And Dr. Cavanaro was in charge of the labor pool for Marlboro Hospital and ha- is headlining that. But yes, the anesthesia has been, uh, closely involved.
Any other questions? Feel free to put them on. Any plans to implement per diem staff? I'm not sure what that question is.
I, I, I mean, I, I'll, I'll take that. Is, if we end up, uh, opening up the surge ICU, there will certainly be an opportunity, you know, to look what we have for available additional ICU staff there, the emergency department or folks that are able to help fill in for other places that we've trained. And that's something that, uh, Sean Cody is beginning to look at to, you know, to figure out the best way of staffing the surge ICU.
Yeah. And we're using like the, the labor pool that everybody's heard about. We're creating roles in surge capacity through that. So we'll keep monitoring it. Hopefully that answered what you were looking for, Allison. Any other questions from anybody today?
We have a few more, Steve, on the slides, if you want to go to those or...
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and hit those, John?
And these were questions that also were brought up yesterday at the medical center's town hall. So, uh, the answers are there as well, but...
Um...
About the DCU center and what, who, who's taking care of the folks? When are they going to be open? What kind of patients can go there? I'm going to go to the next one, but maybe generate a little more conversation.
Yeah. What should you wear in the med surge if you did not pass in any fit testing? Uh, clearly we've been updating these as we go, um, and we continue to adjust it and correct it based on new studies and new information that's out there. But I'll let John speak to the current standard that we put up, uh, was it two days ago?
Yeah, it's, it's fit checking. We talked about this last week as well. And that has, you know, it's, and I think I sent a video, I know I sent a video out about this as well, about fit checking, going from fit testing to fit checking. And why we were doing that was to, you know, to make sure that we were keeping staff safe and not putting them under our hood that was potentially, uh, infected with COVID. Um, and also was to conserve masks. So we are doing fit checking instead of, uh, fit testing, but everyone, uh, you know, should be getting, uh, making sure they're fit checked if they didn't have a mask. And the, I will say it again, we do have a list and we've been reaching out to folks, but if you're wearing a three M small mask, that's a three M small mask, you should be making an appointment in employee health to go get fit checked for a mask. So it's only really the folks that were wearing three M small masks. Uh, everyone else, for the most part, was wearing a Gerson, uh, because that's what we fit checked into first. And if you were wearing a Gerson and you got fitted a while ago, it's, that mask is all set. We have plenty of them. Uh, it's the three M smalls that were, are the driving issue around this.
Yeah. There's also a question, um, about, uh, payroll policy on taking vacations during April and travel outside of Massachusetts in April. Uh, the first piece of that, you know, it's the recommendation that nobody take any vacation during April. Um, however, management and leadership has been barred from taking any. Uh, the challenge for anybody who does do the travel is anytime you come back into the state of Massachusetts, then you have to en- re-enter into a fourteen day quarantine. Uh, that's not our rule, that's actually the state's rule right now. So you'll have to take that into your decisions and what you do, um, decide to do. But when you do that, uh, we will be checking it through, uh, employee health when you get back to get clearance and you'll have to do that fourteen day process.
The, the pappers for intubation, um, there's a whole, there's a process for the operating room. Um, and, you know, Dr. Centura is aware of it. Um, so I can follow up with you, you Sean offline about that. Just make sure you have it, but we, we have them assigned.
Uh, trigger, what is, what is the trigger and process for deployment of med staff Trigger, what is, what is the trigger and process for deployment of med staff volunteers?
I, we'll need Dr. Cavanaro to answer that question. And I, and I think there's a way to raise your hand in this. Actually, that was one of the things I meant to look up because lots of people sign on and it's super hard to find folks. And I, so I don't know if Dr. Cavanaro's on or not, but.
We'll have, we'll have Charlie write a, a, a quick summary of that and send it to the medical staff.
All right. All right, those were the, I think the questions, I don't know if I, that's it for pre-written questions. I don't know if anyone had anything else, but it's.
Want to sell the phones for anybody for a few minutes?
I'm muted, everyone, so you have a five second warning, you're going to be unmuted, so. All right, warning's over. So if you have a question, please ask, unmute all.
Any questions from anybody? Love to hear signups, seems like we did a good job. Go ahead.
This is Allison, sorry to bother you again. You can answer my question. How do I, how do I have access to the labor pool? I'm not working right now and I would like to know how to have access to the labor pool.
Allison Young, so I will make sure your name gets passed on. We do have a list of all the per diem staff. Right now, you know, in, in our labor pool, right now, we have so many staff that are, you know, budgeted hours that we haven't needed to, you know, that we're trying to, you know, that we're looking for work for and moving them around. Is that we haven't needed to access the labor pool, per diem labor pool. But I will, that's kind of the short answer, but I, I can make sure that, that we follow up with you outside.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, not hearing any more questions, we're going to go ahead and wrap up. We'll do this again next week. I think John said for the whole month of April. Anytime, right? So just, you know, really, most importantly, take care of yourselves and always check in on a family members and use their phone or family electronically in any way, just to see how people are doing. This is a tough time for a lot of people. If there's anything we can do, just let us know. Have a great day.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.